Council President, colleagues, I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and the City of Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gotti.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, and Philadelphia, present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, and good morning to the City of Sisterly Love.
Good morning.
Councilman Green.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, good morning to all the attendees, and good morning to the viewing public, I am present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gim.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, prayers goes out to all the families who have lost loved ones, the sisters gun violence, and also, most recently, three-year-old Yaseen Jenkins, who was a 2019 gunshot survivor who recently passed away this week.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Mr. President, good morning, colleagues, good morning, Philadelphia, I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman O.
Good morning, President Clark, good morning, colleagues, I'm present.
Good morning.
Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues, and it's great to see you, Pastor Aiken.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Quinone Sanchez.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, I am present.
Good morning.
Councilman Squilla.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues, present.
Good morning.
Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President, good morning, colleagues, good morning to the listening public.
Good morning.
Council President Clark.
And good morning to all, we have established our quorum, so council will now come to order. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Carlton L. Aiken Senior of the Upper Room Missionary Baptist Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Parker, I would ask all members and guests, but please bow your heads for the invocation. Pastor, please proceed.
Thank you. Good morning to everyone, thank you, President Clark, and thank you to my friend, again, Majority Leader Sherrell Parker. I want to open up this prayer with the following scripture from James 1. It begins at verse 19. It says, "So then, my beloved brethren, let every man be swift to hear, slow to speak, slow to wrath; for the wrath of man does not produce the righteousness of God. Therefore lay aside all filthiness and overflow of wickedness, and receive with meekness the implanted word, which is able to save your souls. But be doers of the word, and not hearers only, deceiving yourselves; for if anyone is a hearer of the word and not a doer, he is like a man observing his natural face in a mirror; for he observes himself, goes away, and immediately forgets what kind of man he was. But he looks into a perfect law of liberty, and continues in it, and is not a forgetful hearer, but a doer of the work. This one will be blessed in what he does. If anyone among you thinks he is religious, and does not bridle his tongue but deceives his own heart, this one's religion is useless, pure and undefiled religion before God and the Father for this, to visit orphans and widows in their trouble, and to keep oneself unspotted from the world." Let us pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to come before this body of leaders in our great city of Philadelphia. We thank you for all of the session, the details, the agenda, for every decision that will be made. We know, God, that these persons have come, Lord, as servant leaders, to provide insight, know-how, to love on these great people of this city. We ask, God, that you will cover them now, as every decision is not an easy decision, and for every tough decision that they have to come to, God, I pray, God, that it will benefit us all, that even in our failures, God, there are things to learn. And I pray, God, that we will open our hearts and our minds to receive the lessons in which you have taught us thus far. I thank you, God, for this leadership, I pray, God, over their families and the families of this city. I pray, God, again, that with every decision that we can continue to prepare, the pillars in which we need to have to sustain in this life, the bare essentials, food, clothing, shelter, to provide the necessary things for us just to live and to be productive citizens. I pray right now, God, again, for that person that is on the street, that needs a morsel of food. I pray right now, God, for every person that needs that clothing, that shelter, but that these persons, and within the far reaches of their abilities, God, that they will look into themselves and to understand the truth that is needed to continue, Lord, to bless this city with their efforts. I also pray, God, that you will allow, again, every person that has experienced gun violence, that has experienced difficulties, discriminations, or any of the like, God, that these persons, Lord, will do everything within their power to be able to protect them, to cover them, and to be able, Lord, to provide a way in to a better life. And I thank you now, again, for this opportunity, God, as I remember as a young man, hearing my father preach and share the gospel of Jesus Christ, but also, Lord, to stand before this body as well, to pray a prayer, just as I do today. So I stand humbled in allowing me this opportunity, just to share over this city, which has given to so many and has provided a better life for all of those persons, again, that are within its walls. So I thank you now, I ask, God, again, as we close this prayer, that we can do these things according to your glory and honor you in all that we do, bless our circles of influence, bless our coming and going, and allow this city to be the best possible from these persons' hands in the work that they shall do. It's in your name that we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Thank you for your spiritual guidance this morning, we really need it, thank you, blessed day.
And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, April 7, 2022, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 7, 2022, be approved?
Second.
Then moved in probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Both ayes have it. And the Journal of April 7, 2022 stands approved. Our next order of business is requests of leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, on behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to Councilwoman. And the Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council, and as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters, resolutions, authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, this move in probably second, that legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Parker may be added to the agenda for today, should those matters arise during the course of this session of council, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Both ayes have it, and the motion carries, and our next order of business is communication, and the clerk will please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on April 20, 2022, I signed the following bill which was passed by council, and is sectioned on April 7, 2022, Bill Number 220225. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 5th Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 5th Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to 3009 Wharton Street, 1554 South Dover Street, 6052 King Sessing Avenue, 6050 King Sessing Avenue, 1926 South 60th Street, and 6032 Chester Avenue in the 2nd Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 4th Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 3rd Councilmatic District. And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 2nd Councilmatic District. And in ordinance, amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code to amend provisions relating to allowable time extensions on a construction permit, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. That concludes our messages, and our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolution, including privileged resolution, be placed on the final passes calendar for the next session of council, unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide the appropriate opportunity for public comment. I'd like to thank you very much in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, will you please read the titles of the legislation that's being offered today by our members?
Councilwoman Parker offers today, on behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution approving the appointment of Deborah McCarthy to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rate Board.
That will be next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gim offers one bill entitled in ordinance amending Title IX of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions by Adding a New Chapter Entitled Employee Commuter Transit Benefit Programs to require certain employees to provide a mass transit and bicycle commuter benefit program, under certain terms and conditions.
For the committee?
Uh, Council President, Councilwoman Gim is asked to be recognized at this time.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Yes, thank you so much, Council President Clark, due to a personal emergency, I'm receiving a leave of absence and would like to be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman, let the record reflect, these shall be granted to Councilwoman Gim.
Councilman Jones offers one bill and one resolution, entitled in ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by Revising Certain Provisions of Section 14524 entitled FDO, 4th District Overlay District.
For the committee?
And a resolution authorize the commissioner of public property-
Councilman?
Yeah, after, after you read the resolution, I'd like to be recognized, sir.
Thank you, Council. Good, Mr. Decker, sorry.
And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to 3438 West Allegheny Avenue in the 4th Councilmatic District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, for your indulgence. Um, in 2008, this council went on a revision of the zoning code uh, that took a year, uh, we revised things, and at the time, with a spirit of predictability, a thing called by right was explored, and we really wanted to take a lot of the influence, access to information that council people had out of the process, and I was very new, didn't know, and, you know, I remember other of our colleagues that are no longer here saying, "Why would you, why would you vote against your own interest?" And I remember that distinctly and said, "You know, we are good government, we're gonna do..." Well, all things that seem like they're going forward are not progress. When you have by right, some people, people take by advantage, and what do I mean by that? We wind up with stores that we can't govern, that stay open as late as they want selling all kinds of paraphernalia to our kids. They have gambling machines in them, they become those places that, um, remember Bass fought against, uh, that have the Plexi glass shields, and local elected officials do not work with the community organizations to be heard. To that end, Mr. President, you submitted, along with me, a rezoning or a reorganization of the ZBA in order to include community organizations, which I think is going to add balance to the ZBA. I want to also say that this resolution is designed to deal with specifically, um, some of the rental properties that are used as these, um, bed breakfasts and, uh, temporary lodging shelters that-
Airbnb, sir.
Air- Airbnbs that are really rooming houses, they're not really Airbnbs, they are rooming houses, where bad things tend to happen. People use them in my district, um, for places where prostitution happens so that the local drug dealer points to an Airbnb where, you know, customers can go either smoke or have other, um, illegal activities. We're gonna get a handle on this problem. I'm not trying to dissuade the person in some parts of my district that has a large house that wants to do it the right way, but I believe that every community organization should be able to weigh in on how those Airbnbs are managed and where they're located. And nobody wants to have a party until 2:00 in the morning that is out of control. So we're gonna rein it in in the 4th District. We would be the test case, but I encourage my colleagues to consider, um, some, some areas where it is a problem within your respective districts or in the City of Philadelphia. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. I understand.
Councilman Dom offers two resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, a resolution honoring and recognizing attorney Michael Sklaroff for his profound imprint on the legal history of Pennsylvania and the development of the City of Philadelphia on the occasion of his retirement.
Next week's calendar?
On his own behalf, Councilman Dom offers a resolution honoring the life of Bobby Rydell and recognizing his lifetime of achievement in entertainment, which delighted millions and made Philadelphia proud.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Thomas offers two resolutions, entitled a resolution congratulating champion of the week, scientist Taku Kambayashi and Ruth Chow from the University of Pennsylvania's biomedical research team on their victory in the Stat Madness Competition.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution calling on the Pennsylvania Legislature to use federal COVID-19 relief money to fund freedom schools across the state in Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar?
Uh, Council President, Councilman Thomas is asked to be recognized on that resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, uh, again, and thank you, Council President, I just want to take a moment to offer some brief remarks, um, upon the introduction of this resolution. This is something, um, that I've been advocating for since, uh, the time I went to primary in 2019. I've, uh, talked to the administration about the importance of the program. Uh, we can clearly see that the state of Illinois is not just taking, uh, the initiative serious around what it can do as it relates to academic support. I think my biggest push as it relates to, uh, funding freedom schools specifically in the City of Philadelphia is that not only is it a free summer program that, again, addresses the academic gap, it puts our teenagers in a position where their time is occupied in a positive capacity throughout the entire summer, and it also puts them in a position where they're employed and they can earn a credit towards their high school graduation as well as prepare them for any future endeavor, whether it's applying to college, uh, to go to some level of higher academia, or, uh, preparing them to go directly into the workforce. Uh, so I'm asking, um, the City of Philadelphia, as well as the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, to follow, uh, what the state of Illinois did and put significant funding into freedom schools to address the gun violence, the issue that we see, as well as the achievement gap that we know exists. Thank you, Council President, thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Council.
Councilman Squilla offers one resolution, entitled a resolution also naming 5th Street between Cantrell Street and Snyder Avenue as Reverend Enos Mackey Way.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman O offers three resolutions, entitled a resolution declaring May 7, 2022 as John on the Lawn Day in recognition of the inaugural event created by alumni of the Philadelphia School, High School for the Creative and Performing Arts. Uh, Mr. President, Councilman O would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President, I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution at today's session of council.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
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 Both ayes have it, motion is approved, that will be on today's final passes calendar.
Thank you.
And a resolution honoring the Korean-American Association of Greater Philadelphia for hosting a Korea in Philly celebration in recognition of the 50th anniversary and the opening of the Korean Consular Office in Philadelphia. Again, Councilman O would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you again, I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution at today's, uh, session of council.
Second.
The move to probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, uh, motion is approved, that will be on today's final passes calendar.
Thank you.
And a resolution recognizing April 30th as Vietnamese Heritage and Freedom Flag Day as a symbol of the contributions of the Vietnamese-American community in the City of Philadelphia. Councilman O would like to be recognized on this resolution, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President, for the last time, I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of this resolution at today's session of council.
Second.
The move in probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Both approve, ayes have it, motion is granted, and that will be on today's final passes calendar.
Thank you very much.
There are no other bills or resolutions, uh, by the members today, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is reports on committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a report from the Committee of the Hold.
Thank you, Mr. President, the Committee of the Hold reports out nine resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee of the Hold, which was deferred Resolution Number 220264 entitled a resolution appointing Athrosa Hussein to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and Resolution Number 220265, uh, appointing Benjamin Lerner to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and Resolution Number 220266 entitled a resolution appointing Hakim Pei to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and Resolution Number 220267 entitled a resolution appointing Hassan Bennett to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and Resolution Number 220268 entitled a resolution appointing Jahli Hachid to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and Resolution Number 220269 entitled a resolution appointing John Solomon to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and Resolution Number 220270 entitled a resolution appointing Marilis Santiago to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and Resolution Number 220271 entitled a resolution appointing Melanie DeBoos to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission, and Resolution Number 220272 entitled a resolution appointing Rosora Torres-Tomás to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. Respectfully reports it as considered the same, and returns attached resolutions to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker, resolutions Number 220264, 220265, 220266, 220267, 220268, 220269, 220270, 220271, and 220272 will be placed on the final passes calendar at our next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilman Thomas for a report from the Committee of Streets and Services.
Thank you, Council President, um, I'm sorry. Um, the Committee on, um, Streets and Services reports out four bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker, please read your report.
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which was deferred Bill Number 211020 entitled An Ordinance Authorizing Encroachments in the Nature of a Sidewalk Cafe in the vicinity of 762 South 10th Street, and Bill Number 220190 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 10, 700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Refuse and Littering by revising the annual fee for neighborhood sanitation and cleaning services and exempting owner-occupied duplexes from the annual neighborhood sanitation and cleaning services fee requirements. And Bill Number 220222 entitled an ordinance authorizing the relocation of the southwesterly curb line of Ridge Avenue from Calame Street to a point northwesterly therefrom, and the northwesterly curb line of Calame Street from Ridge Avenue to Kelly Drive on City Plan Number 163, authorizing the plotting on said city plan of an area for public pedestrian use extending along the northwesterly side of Calame Street from Ridge Avenue to a point northwesterly therefrom. And Bill Number 220223 entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on South 61st Street, both sides between Lindbergh Boulevard to just past East Wick Avenue. Respectfully reports it as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, the Chair again recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President, I move that the rules of council be suspended, ask to permit first reading this day of bills Number 211020, 220190, 220222, and 220223.
Second.
Thank you, it has been moving properly second, that the rules of council be suspended, so ask to permit first reading this day of bills Number 211020, 220190, 220222, and 220223, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Both ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. That concludes our reports on committee, and our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading, and these bills will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion concerning the resolutions on the final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passes calendar. They are Resolution Numbers 220324, 220325, 220326, 220327, 220328, 220331, 220332, 220333, and 220334.
Second.
Thank you, it has been moved in second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by Councilwoman Parker, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Both ayes have it, and the motion carries, and we will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. The Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling in bills and resolution on a regular second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, in addition to the resolutions being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passes calendars today. They are Numbers 220248 and 220330, all of the bills and resolutions are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, before we proceed with the consideration of the agenda, we will have our public comment session, so we'd like to take a five-minute break to allow our technology professionals an opportunity to connect our speakers today. is connected to the meeting and before considering the resolutions and bills we have before us today, we will consider public comment. It will go as follows. Public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passes calendars for possible action at assessment of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 PM the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we will take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation and add your name to the list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Under ideal circumstances, which is today, uh, we will have three minutes to speak. Uh, but however, the time limit may vary based on the volume of individuals uh on a particular council day. But in order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully the established time limit and ask the time limit. So once invited to the meeting and asked to begin your testimony, a timer will be started. We will monitor your remaining time throughout your testimony. When there are 30 seconds remaining, you will be reminded of this. But once your allotted time is passed, you will be asked to conclude your remarks and shortly thereafter you will be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting. Um, we also reserve the right to limit the number of speakers where repetitious comments are being made on the same subject matter, which could affect callbacks for public comment at meeting. Uh, please be aware that this public meeting is being recorded and because the meeting is public, participants and viewers have no reasonable expectation of privacy. So by continuing to be in the meeting, you are considering to be in recorded. Um, I would thank you very much for your willingness to participate in our public comment session. I've now asked the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
The first speaker today, Mr. President, is Brittany Sterner commenting on 220328.
Good morning. I'll set your name for the record. Please proceed with your testimony.
Uh, good morning. My name is Brittany Sterner. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Lovely. Thank you. I'm calling in to support the resolution celebrating the One Book, One Philadelphia 20th Anniversary selection of My Broken Language by Kiara Allevia Hudes. Um, I've directed the Free Library's One Book, One Philadelphia program for five years and this year we're celebrating its 20th anniversary. Um, if you haven't read it, My Broken Language is Kiara Allevia Hudes' memoir of coming of age in Philly in the 1980s and 90s, specifically North and West Philadelphia. Um, it's not only a love letter to the city of Philadelphia, but an incisive and heartfelt portrait of her community and family, especially of the lived experiences of the Puerto Rican women who raised her. Kiara said recently that Philadelphia is a city built on the suffering of many communities as well as upon the wisdom and love of many communities. And her book reflects how those truths coexisted in her life here. So through seven weeks of programming, this one book season, we've centered those ideas and worked closely with Kiara, many community partners who are deeply invested in the book and the program to provide opportunities for people across our city to share their own experiences that connect with the book, to hear the experiences of others, and to build community with one another inspired by Kiara's words. The book, from reproductive justice to HIV stigma to gentrification to the heritage of Philly's Puerto Rican and Afro-Latinx Yoruba-based communities, to our relationship with nature and green urban spaces, it creates so many necessary openings for conversation and connection around issues and experiences that are deeply relevant to the lives of Philadelphians. And this book gives us a chance to celebrate an author who was born in and raised by our beautiful and complicated city. So I just want to thank you for considering. Hope you get a chance to read it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The final speaker today, Mr. President, is Dr. Sylvia Diggs commenting on 220333.
Okay.
Good morning. This is Reverend Sylvia Diggs and I'm calling to support the resolution for 220333 honoring Women and History Month. This young lady, retired Judge Doris Smith Ribner should smell her flowers while she is still alive. She has given so much to the state of Pennsylvania and even to the city of Philadelphia. She's an advocate for education, for justice, and for diversity. So I supportly and I applaud you, the council people, for allowing this opportunity for her. But once again, please, please pass Resolution 220337. And thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other speakers, Mr. President.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
My apologies.
Yeah, if you give more.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Council President. My apologies for the interruption. I received a message that I just wanted to put on the record for public comment uh from Teresa Brunson who wanted to give testimony in support of the resolution for Judge Doris Smith Ribner. And I just wanted to put that on the record since they were unable to connect. Thank you, Council President.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. That shall be reflected in our record. Thank you very much. Uh, that concludes our public comment. And we will now consider today's resolution consent agenda. I will ask the clerk to please read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please, we now read the titles of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. Resolution Number 220324 entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 2100 North 6th Street and 2104 North 6th
Thank you. Thank you. And we are back. Uh, thank you for your patience. Now that everyone
Street in the 5th Councilmanic District of the City of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 220325 entitled a resolution recognizing Rick Bloomingdale upon his retirement as president from the Pennsylvania AFL-CIO. And Resolution Number 220326 entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating Philadelphia natives Questlove Yasmin Sullivan and the Philadelphia Orchestra for a stellar 2022 award season collectively winning an Oscar and four Grammys for outstanding contributions to music and film. And Resolution Number 220327 entitled a resolution recognizing April 2022, 2022 as Earth Day in the city of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 220328 entitled a resolution celebrating the selection of My Broken Language, a memoir written by Philadelphia-born, Pulitzer Prize-winning author Quiara Alegría Hudes for the 2022 One Book, One Philadelphia program. And Resolution Number 220331 entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating Dawn Staley for coaching the 2022 Women's NCAA Championship basketball team, the University of South Carolina's Ginn Cox. And Resolution Number 220332 entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week Northeast High School Wrestling Team on their successful 2021-2022 season and winning the Public League Championship Title. And Resolution Number 220333 entitled a resolution recognizing and honoring Judge Doris Smith Ribner for her years of service to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as the first Black woman elected to a statewide judicial seat on the occasion of Women's History Month. And Resolution Number 220334 entitled a resolution recognizing and honoring Michael McGady and Matthew Mulholland, police officers in the 39th District for their swift, lifesaving response to a fire in North Philadelphia.
That it? Okay.
It is, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly second that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have it. All of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been adopted. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on a regular second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 220248.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1604 through 1608, 1610, 1612, and 1614 Page Street and authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute the redevelopment contract with Habitat for Humanity Incorporated. Had to take such action as may be necessary to effectuate the redevelopment contract.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, sir, I would like to offer an amendment to Resolution Number 220248. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in probably second that amendment to Resolution Number 220248 be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution has been amended. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion on the amended resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, on your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution as amended.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in second that the resolution as amended be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 220330.
A resolution calling on Mayor James Z. Kenny, Governor Tom Wolf, and the Pennsylvania General Assembly to use all powers of their offices to declare a state of emergency and seek available emergency relief resources from the state and federal governments through the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, PIMA, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, to address the humanitarian emergency in the Kensington neighborhood of Philadelphia, including but not limited to resources that will provide hazard mitigation, access to health-related treatments, neighborhood cleanup and remediation, wraparound social services for neighborhood residents and persons experiencing homelessness and substance use disorders, and all other necessary assistance to maintain a safe and healthy environment for Philadelphians living or working in this area.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dunn.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, along with Councilmember Sanchez and Squilla, I wanted to give an update on the Kensington Resolution, which is up for final passage today. We've had preliminary conversations with community groups, elected officials, including members of the mayor's team and the governor, that are positive. I appreciate the ongoing leadership from Councilmembers Sanchez and Squilla in an effort to bring multiple government jurisdictions together with the community to transition Kensington from where it is today to where they envision it can be. We have here a humanitarian crisis in Kensington, and this would not be tolerated anywhere else in Philadelphia, and we should not allow it to continue in Kensington. I hope I can count on everybody's support. And I will say that I wish I had been louder earlier. And I apologize to Councilmembers Sanchez and Squilla for not helping them before in this crisis. This needs everyone's attention. This is worse than any third world country. I hope everyone will support it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, call for motion. Councilman?
Yes, I'd like to uh move on the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in probably second. All in favor of said resolution indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it. And the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
I do not, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, that concludes our calendar for today. And prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I will note for the record, um, at this time, we will use the chat feature available Microsoft Teams.
Mr. President? Mr. President? I'm sorry. I'm mistaken. There are, there are resolutions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Decker.
I, I, I apologize.
Mr. Decker. Okay.
We have a resolution declaring May 7, 2022.
And Resolution number two, two, zero, three, two, seven intended resolution recognizing April two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two as Earth Day in the city of Philadelphia. And Resolution number two, two, zero, three, two, eight intended resolution celebrating the selection of My Broken Language, a memoir written by Philadelphia-born, Pulitzer Prize-winning author, Quiara Allegría Hudes, for the two thousand twenty-two One Book, One Philadelphia program. And Resolution number two, two, zero, three, three, one intended resolution honoring and congratulating Dawn Staley for coaching the two thousand twenty-two Women's NCAA Championship Basketball Team, the University of South Carolina's Ginn Cox. And Resolution number two, two, zero, three, three, two intended resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week Northeast High School Wrestling Team on their successful two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two season and winning the Public League Championship Title. And Resolution number two, two, zero, three, three, three intended resolution recognizing and honoring Judge Doris Smith Ribner for her years of service to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as the first Black woman elected to a statewide judicial seat on the occasion of Women's History Month. And Resolution number two, two, zero, three, three, four intended resolution recognizing and honoring Michael McGady and Matthew Mulholland, police officers in the Thirty-Ninth District, for their swift, lifesaving response to a fire in North Philadelphia.
That it? Okay.
It is, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it. All of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been adopted. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on a regular second reading and final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number two, two, zero, two, forty-eight.
A resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as sixteen oh four through sixteen oh eight, sixteen ten, sixteen twelve, and sixteen fourteen Page Street, and authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute the redevelopment contract with Habitat for Humanity Incorporated, and to take such action as may be necessary to effectuate the redevelopment contract.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, sir, I would like to offer an amendment to Resolution number two, two, zero, two, forty-eight. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that amendment to Resolution number two, two, zero, two, forty-eight be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it. Resolution has been amended. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion on the amended resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, on your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution as amended.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and second that the resolution as amended be adopted, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution number two, two, zero, three, three, zero.
A resolution calling on Mayor James Z. Kenny, Governor Tom Wolf, and the Pennsylvania General Assembly to use all powers of their offices to declare a state of emergency and seek available emergency relief resources from the state and federal governments through the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, PMA, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, to address the humanitarian emergency in the Kensington neighborhood of Philadelphia, including but not limited to resources that will provide hazard mitigation, access to health-related treatments, neighborhood cleanup and remediation, wraparound social services for neighborhood residents and persons experiencing homelessness, and substance use disorders, and all other necessary assistance to maintain a safe and healthy environment for Philadelphians living or working in this area.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dunn.
Thank you, Council President. Along with Councilmembers Sanchez and Squilla, I wanted to give an update on the Kensington Resolution, which is up for final passage today. We've had preliminary conversations with community groups, elected officials, including members of the mayor's team and the governor, that are positive. I appreciate the ongoing leadership from Councilmembers Sanchez and Squilla in an effort to bring multiple government jurisdictions together with the community to transition Kensington from where it is today to where they envision it can be. We have here a humanitarian crisis in Kensington, and this would not be tolerated anywhere else in Philadelphia, and we should not allow it to continue in Kensington. I hope I can count on everybody's support, and I will say that I wish I had been louder earlier, and I apologize to Councilmembers Sanchez and Squilla for not helping them before in this crisis. This needs everyone's attention. This is worse than any third world country. I hope everyone will support it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, call for a motion. Councilman?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, move on the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second, all in favor of said resolution indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
I do not, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, that concludes our calendar for today. And prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I will note for the record, um, at this time, we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow.
Mr. President? Mr. President? I'm sorry. I'm mistaken. There are, there are resolutions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Decker.
I, I, I apologize.
Mr. Decker? Okay.
We have a resolution declaring May seventh, two thousand twenty-two as John on the Lawn Day in recognition of the inaugural event created by alumni of the Philadelphia High School for the Creative and Performing Arts, introduced today by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
You're moving probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the Korean American Association of Greater Philadelphia for hosting a Korea in Philly celebration in recognition of its fiftieth anniversary and the opening of the Korean Consular Office in Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
You're moving probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing April thirtieth as Vietnamese Heritage and Freedom Flag Day as a symbol of the contributions of the Vietnamese-American community in the city of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilman O.
Chair again recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you again. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And with apologies, Mr. President, there are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar.
It's okay, Mr. Decker. It is a rare occasion when you, you, I'm not even going to call it a mistake, an oversight, sir. We're all human. Thank you. Uh, okay, we're gonna move towards speeches, but prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, I will note for the record at the time that we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. With that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. Um, uh, Councilmember Cindy Bass and I, uh, have chaired the, uh, Council Special Committee on Child Separation, and, uh, that committee has, uh, completed its report. The report will be, uh, published. We are, um, hosting an event, um, in Love Park tomorrow at twelve noon. Um, that is to distribute, uh, the, uh, report, its findings and recommendations. In addition, Sheriff Bilal, a member of the committee, will be there, as well as Andrea Lawful Sanders of, uh, Word, uh, nine hundred, uh, Simply Monica of Sahit one hundred, um, and Dr. George Fraser, uh, as, as well as others. I want to make sure I don't miss anybody, um, but we will invite everyone, uh, who has an interest in this matter, that is, um, the, uh, findings and recommendations, to ensure that the state law is being followed, that the procedures are being applied, uh, properly to protect children from, uh, abuse, from harm, uh, and to ensure that families, uh, retain their integrity and that, uh, siblings are united. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Speeches on behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. Um, this week, actually these last couple of weeks, we did have council session, has been, uh, really busy for us specifically, um, in the budget hearings that we've been in, and I know a lot of folks who view council, um, can't necessarily, uh, partake in all of the different budget conversation that we participated in. But, um, you know, I, I would say that we've done well over twenty-four hours of budget hearings thus far, and, uh, many more to go. And I just want to take a moment to just highlight some of the things that, um, I know I've advocated for. Uh, one of the things that we talked about this week, um, is just the idea of the city generating more revenue and pushing the administration to find ways to generate revenue for the city without increasing taxes for people or for businesses. And we sent a number of memos to the administration around recommendations that we feel like can help that. Uh, Councilman Jones and I have also talked to the school district, and that wasn't necessarily a part of budget dialogue, but just in preparation for the summertime to continue to push this idea of giving, uh, programs and organizations access to our spaces so we can have as many free programs as possible in the city of Philadelphia. Uh, we've also talked about elections and the importance of fully funding elections, um, as it relates to, um, where we are right now and the important elections that we have in the future. Um, and last but not least, um, I just really want to, uh, put the emphasis on the infrastructure investment that we know we need to see. Um, I had the, uh, opportunity to spend some time on Broad and Girard yesterday, and I had the opportunity to meet a woman named Mrs. Johnson. And I told Mrs. Johnson I would give her a shout out because she says she listens to council every Thursday on W U R D. Uh, so I wanted her to know, um, that, uh, her community is one that we care about. Um, it's the Mrs. Johnsons of the world that we're thinking about when we are fighting, um, as it relates to budget advocacy, and it's imperative, uh, throughout all the different things that we're fighting for, that we see capital investment in infrastructure. I've said it before and I'll say it again, twelve percent of our roads produce eighty percent of our motor vehicle, uh, our motor vehicle accidents. Twelve percent of our roads produce eighty percent of our car accidents. Um, so at the end of the day, we've been pushing the administration to have that infrastructure investment in intersections like, uh, Broad and Girard and Council President's District or, um, Red Lion Road in the Boulevard in, uh, Councilmember O'Neill's District. These are intersections that are crucial, uh, to the safety of the citizens of the city of Philadelphia, and we're going to continue to fight for these issues as well as a number of other issues throughout the course of our budget advocacy. So I just wanted to highlight those things, um, because I feel like they're really important, and I want to say thank you to all of my colleagues for all of your support as it relates to the fights that we've been a part of during this budget cycle. Thank you, Council President, and I appreciate the lead in the city.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you.
And I apologize for the background noise, too. I want to go ahead and put that out there. I'm not going to ignore it and act like it wasn't there. I apologize.
Oh, it's okay. No problem. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for your hard work. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, very quickly, I just wanted to thank all of you, uh, for voting in favor of the One Book, One Philadelphia Resolution, which is a resolution, uh, that I introduce every year and have worked on since the staffer under former Councilmember Blondell Reynolds Brown. But this year, uh, the author has a very special connection to, uh, our Philadelphia City Council and Councilmember Maria Quinones Sanchez, uh, prize-winning book titled My Broken Language, which is a memoir by Kiara Allegría Hudes. Uh, My Broken Language is her musical memoir of searching for her own voice while coming of age in the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties, uh, in Philadelphia, uh, while she's striving to become an artist, uh, and tell the stories of her family and of her community. So I wanted to first, uh, thank each and every one of you colleagues for supporting that resolution. Uh, secondly, I just wanted to remind all of you to please continue to share, uh, the information regarding our community evening resource centers, uh, that are up and running. Uh, I had the opportunity to visit the Community Evening Resource Center, uh, at the Dixon House, uh, last night for the second time, uh, in the last couple of weeks. Uh, Dixon House is located at nineteen twenty South Twentieth Street. Um, they are open daily, each and every day, including the weekends, uh, from seven PM to two AM. And the Community Evening Resource Center, uh, located at Community of Compassion CDC is located right at the corner of Sixty-second and Cedar. Uh, and so I ask that all of you colleagues, please share, uh, that information so that we can encourage young people, uh, to come to the community evening resource centers, have a safe space to be, uh, be able to receive resources, uh, conflict resolution training, uh, job training, service linkages. Uh, last night, the young people, uh, were partaking in a cooking class, uh, which was just wonderful. They made cheese steak egg rolls. Uh, and it was so, so amazing. Uh, we had the opportunity to sit in the beanbags, uh, in their game room with the LED lights, uh, in the murals all over the walls, uh, with their, uh, Executive Director Otis Bullock and some of the other staff. Um, they also had yoga available for the young people on the first floor yesterday. Uh, so there's a lot of great activities happening, uh, at our community evening resource centers, and we need your help, uh, with getting the word out so we can get as many young people as possible, uh, to partake in this resource, uh, opportunity. We know that there's currently an RFP out, uh, for additional community evening resource centers, uh, one in Central Division Council President, uh, which encompasses your area, and also for the Northwest Division, uh, which encompasses the areas of my colleagues, uh, Councilmember Bass in the Eighth District, and our Madam Majority Leader, Councilmember Parker in the Ninth Council District. And so I hope that you encourage your organizations to apply for those opportunities. It is our goal to have at least six community evening resource centers up and running, uh, by the end of this year, hopefully, uh, and, and do not dismay, uh, I have already put it out there that we must, uh, look at the Northeast, uh, as our sixth option as well. So the goal is to have coverage in every division of the city, have an opportunity full of resources available for our young people, and do all we can to provide them with a safe space, uh, every day, seven PM to two AM. Thank you so much, Council President, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you. Thank you for your continued good work on a very important issue. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank my colleague, uh, Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson for all of the work that she's doing, particularly around young people. And today I wanted to just, um, speak about a couple of things, and the first is I wanted to echo, uh, the comments made earlier by my colleague, uh, Councilwoman David O. about, um, the rally that we're going to be having tomorrow in Love Park. We really want to encourage people to come out. Um, and, and really, this is a good news story, and it's a good news story because we've done a lot of work, uh, particularly Councilman O., I have to say, has done an outstanding job, uh, on this particular issue and making sure that we spread the word about families being separated. And it's incredibly important that we make sure that we reunite families, and the work that has been done by this committee thus far, I believe, has made a significant dent in the amount of, uh, children who have been displaced. There has been a sharp decrease, uh, as per the budget testimony from DHS, there has been a sharp decrease in the number of children who were taken out of their homes and put into other placements. So, uh, we count that as a victory, and I really want to, again, encourage folks to come on out so that we can keep those victories going. And again, this is really, uh, good news for our young people. And, uh, speaking of good news for our young people, you know, I'm just, uh, so excited. I have two other things that I wanted to just cover today. And the first is that I'm very proud to announce that last night I learned one of my staff members, Legislative A. Jamil Duncan, was named as one of the prestigious Gates Scholars. So he, we have a Gates Scholar among our staff on Philadelphia City Council. Uh, many of my colleagues are already acquainted with Jamil, who prior to joining my team had a wealth of experience in policy and legislative analysis and research, uh, along with the development and crafting of legislation. He has contributed his passion for work with other elected officials, including State Senator Sharif Streif and City Councilman Bobby Heenan. And not only that, Jamil is a published author, a fantastic writer, Director of Policy and Research at Urb Ed, and a member of the Philadelphia Police Department's Youth Advisory Commission. What many may not know is that Jamil is an eighteen-year-old senior at Multicultural Academy Charter High School here in Philadelphia. This Gates Scholarship Award is particularly impressive because it is so competitive and highly selected, selective, with a difficult and rigorous application process. It award, it awards outstanding minority high school seniors from low-income households and selects just three hundred students from across the entire country. The Gates Scholarship funds the full cost of awardees' college attendance that is not already covered by other financial aid and expected contributions. I could not be more proud of this brilliant, dedicated member of the Bass team, and I hope you will all join me in wishing him the very best as he pursues pre-law studies at Swarthmore, where he will begin his journey towards becoming an attorney. Uh, we just want to wish him congratulations, and, uh, you know, a, as I said, I'm just so incredibly proud. We should all be proud. This is a city council staffer who's doing this work, and he's just fantastic. And the, and the, the thing about it is, there's nothing like having a staff meeting with him at seven AM, and at the end of our staff meeting, we say, "Have a nice day at school." So, so he's, uh, just a phenomenal young man. And while I'm on, um, you know, good news stories about our young people, I have one other item that I just wanted to touch on, which is that, uh, it was just brought, uh, announced yesterday, uh, that Catherine Davis, who is, uh, currently the principal of C W Henry School, uh, which is in the Eighth Council District, will now be the, uh, the president of Central High School, which is also in the Eighth Council District. Uh, and what's, uh, particularly notable, uh, notable about that is that Catherine Davis will be the very first in the history of Central High School's history. She will be the very first African American to, uh, head the helm of one of our most prestigious, uh, schools here in the city of Philadelphia. Uh, and again, she's just an outstanding, uh, young woman. I've had great opportunity to get to know her, uh, through her work at C W Henry, and I wish her the very best, as I'm sure that we all do, as she moves to her next challenge, uh, and, and, uh, represents from the community. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. That's awesome news. That's awesome.
Yes.
Congratulations to those fine, fine people. Appreciate it, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Also, just want to thank both Councilmembers, uh, Gilmore Richardson and Bass for that great positive news, uh, what's happening in our city, especially in reference to young people, uh, things that are happening at Dixon House, as well as the new president, I think the fifteenth president, uh, Central High School. I think she's a member of class of two sixty-four. Uh, so definitely congratulations, uh, on that great news. I just want to bring, um, both my colleagues and the listeners, um, up to speed on an event that my staff is doing this Saturday, um, which is April twenty-third, from one to four PM. We will be having a resource fair at the Feltonville Recreation Center, two twenty-one East Wyoming Avenue. Um, this is an activity, uh, that will have a number of resources for the community. Uh, we'll have the Philadelphia Bar Association, uh, Lawyer Referral Information Service, as well as Community Legal Services, uh, PICO, uh, the city's Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disability Services. We'll also be doing screening, uh, for people to sign up for colon cancer, which really does impact Black and Brown communities, um, around, um, the country. In addition, we'll be providing, um, COVID-nineteen vaccinations as, as well. So once again, that will be this Saturday from one to four PM at the Feltonville Recreation Center, two twenty-one East Wyoming Avenue. I hope all that are listening are able to attend and partic, participate. Now, although we had some great, um, positive news from council, um, we are still dealing with some very serious issues in our city. Uh, I think many of us may have read the recent, um, State of the City Report, uh, from Q, and seventy percent of our city residents that were in that poll stated crime and gun violence is the number one issue in our city. And we know we don't need to have a poll to tell us this information. All of us in our day-to-day travels and talking with constituents, um, know that crime and gun violence has been a major issue in our city. Uh, you know, recently, Councilmember Jones and I had, um, hearings in the Public Safety Committee regarding the work of Man Up P H L, uh, where Dr. Brian Ellis and Solomon Jones talked about how they listened to the streets and heard the issues and concerns from young men who have been impacted by this issue. So we know gun violence is the number one issue, um, in our city, and I know I have personally, um, in my speeches and counsel, have been critical of the administration and not having the urgency that we need to address gun violence in the most recent budget proposal, um, by the mayor. But at the same point, I do have to give credit when credit is due. Um, when Commissioner Outlaw came to our body to talk about issues in reference to the police, um, residency was one of the ma, major issues she cited in reference to the challenges we had with policing in the city of Philadelphia. So the fact that the mayor went to the Civil Service Commission, um, to have the residency requirement lifted, I have to give the mayor credit for that. Uh, I'm going to credit the mayor for following our leadership. Now, this happened after both Council President and I introduced legislation regarding the residency issue. So I want to thank the mayor for following our leadership and addressing this urgency issue, and as we continue to go through this budget process, I hope the mayor will continue to follow, um, our leadership to address the urgency in, um, our city, especially as it relates to public safety. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
What a great day, uh, members of the city council of, of Philadelphia. Um, I want to stay on a very, uh, positive, uh, note. Um, in, uh, September of twenty nineteen, pre-COVID, uh, colleagues, you will remember that, um, I introduced, and it was our body that passed, uh, a ten million dollar transfer ordinance to establish, make permanent, and citywide, in our great city of Philadelphia, the infrastructure needed, uh, to establish a program that we call P H L T C B, an acronym for Philadelphia Taking Care of Business. Um, started, Mr. President, as a, a pilot program. Um, started, Mr. President, as a, a pilot program, uh, at Broad and Alney, um, that since I arrived here as a member of this body in twenty sixteen, you know, every year in our budget ask, um, we had, uh, requested dollars to get a pilot established, um, and as soon as those green shirts were up and running, um, on Broad and Alney, the text messages and telephone calls started coming and saying, um, that we like this here and we want to see it all over, uh, the city. We had already, Mr. President, in your district, remembered the orange shirts that were already moving in, in North Philadelphia, and now folks are working all over the city. Um, and I am proud to announce that on tomorrow, all of our colleagues, Friday, April, uh, twenty-second, from ten thirty AM to eleven thirty AM, at the Martin Luther King Recreation Center, uh, located in, uh, Council President Clark's, uh, District, twenty-one oh one Cecil B. Moore Avenue, will host a, um, Philadelphia Taking Care of Business pep rally. It is going to include the two hundred cleaning ambassadors who now are cleaning commercial corridors, uh, and, and putting trash together, and then there's been special, um, teams from our sanitation department that go around to pick that trash up, but we are going to celebrate them, um, uh, Mr. President, for their work, um, and for the benefit of the viewing public, um, who are interested in knowing, well, what has this group done? They've collected one hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight bags of trash, uh, Mr. President. Um, that's about over fourteen thousand dumpsters and averages six hundred and fifty-two bags of trash, uh, collected on a typical, uh, cleaning day. Um, in addition, there are two hundred cleaning ambassadors who are employed, um, earning a minimum, a minimum of fifteen dollars, um, an hour, um, getting, uh, professional, uh, development, OSHA-ten, training and certification, um, digital, uh, improvement to their skillset, email address using, um, the internet, so I'm really proud of all of them, along with the women and minority owners, um, who are proud of this. So, uh, congratulations to each of you, and I hope you will join, um, us tomorrow in the Council President's, uh, District to say thank you to the men and women who are working to make sure that we, uh, in Philadelphia rid ourselves of that Filthaduffia moniker. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Yeah, a lot of trash. Thank you. Um, that concludes our speeches on behalf of the minority and the majority. So with that, I would like to recognize Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two at ten AM.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and second that council stand adjourned until Thursday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, ten AM. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much, and again, please be safe. Thank you all. Love you guys.
Thank you.